Ready? You ready? Let's go. Hello, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting, the special meeting. Uh, to order. Yeah, the motion will clear the agenda.
Okay.
Second. Lawrence, second by. Hey, Nathan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion case, mayor's report.
No report.
Counsel reports.
No report.
Guys.
No, no report.
No report. Alright, no report on the council. Um, public agenda. We have forty-five minutes allotted. Anyone like to come up and speak? You have three minutes. You'll be recognized on my left, your right, anyone? Ms. Bell, do you have your hand raised? Do you have your hand raised? No, you're good, okay. On the right, at my right, your left. Ms. Regina, would you like to give a report? You're good, okay. No one in the back, uh, more public comments, or public comments, citizens' comments is now closed. We want to go policy agenda. If the clerk would read the subject matter.
To the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Alright. Now we go out there, open up discussion.
Let me, uh, make sure everyone has the three dots and three pieces of paper that kind of the, the thrust of the whole matter here. We updated, um, from the last two workshops, you know, the additions and corrections. And thank Regina and Diana for pulling these numbers together. And they've done tremendous driving in the back, you know, from the, uh, in that world. Uh, did a good job too, and all our department heads. You know, we're faced with a pretty good task on what we need to do, where we need to be in a position, you know, to, uh, move forward. But let me, let me say, uh, a couple of things. Non-departmental, we took those, uh, suggestions. Everybody has the non-departmental summary. And the bottom line is look like, you know, we, they actually a little bit less than twenty-eight or twenty-eight thousand less than we did in twenty-two. Everybody. Increase, yeah, twenty-eight thousand, uh, increase, I'm sorry.
We gotta see red, I think.
Less. But it's still five million, five million, uh, three-one-four versus five million, two-eight-six last year in FY twenty-two. So we put all of those, um, suggestions from the last go-around. Anybody have any questions with that, with the non-departmental?
Uh, you know, I know, I have a question on non-departmental, as I got the financial statements from CTA. I noticed that they went over their budget in materials by about a hundred grand. And I, I just, I haven't had time to contact anyone at CTA, but does anyone know why they went over in their materials budget? Okay, that's just a note that I made, it was just interesting that that's kind of what they're asking for, and they went over a hundred thousand in those materials.
Like George said, it's a hundred thousand, you know, pretty good number. Uh, but again, I'm sorry.
In addition, in addition to the changes that we discussed last week, we also received a few more requests, and those have been added to this list as well.
So at this point in time, we're confident that even though this may change as far as how we're gonna work this stuff out. We've addressed everybody who's asked for things as far as non-departmental world. Yeah, when you look at it too, you know, that five million seems like a lot of money, but three million of it is insurance. And that's property insurance, and I think we've, we had been estimating three-point-one. And, and we lowered it a little bit as far as, uh, real, I mean, that's property insurance.
There's a hundred thousand in insurance, what, thirty-two?
Went down, went down, we, it was three-point-one initially. Went down a hundred and twenty. Yeah, but it's still, I mean, it's the biggest part of the, of the ballgame here in non-departmental is, is that insurance. You know, what, what can you do? I mean, you can drop coverage, and we still may, you know, be forced to, to cover some things, but I mean, as far as how we trying to make this, you know, round and, and rectangular pegs hit one another. That's a, that's a big part of it. I'm gonna take a breath here. All right, we're non-departmental?
Hold that then.
Can you hear? Turn the mic on.
I'll buy some cheap mic. Get some cheap mic, can you hear?
I can hear that.
The wax, uh, the library and also city for outside audit, like we do at the museums and that. Have they brought anything to do at all?
Uh, I, I haven't had any kind of audit or any kind of financial.
The library lady emailed us after the last meeting.
Audit?
Mm-hmm, she emailed the audit. I'll check to see where it went and distributed if it only went to me. I didn't look at the distribution, I thought she sent it to everyone.
No, I didn't find it, I didn't find it, they needed to write the people's salary to CTA. Well, I'm worried about the people's salary. The whole world's hours. But they go out there, they grant them all, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how to do that. But twenty-two, twenty-one, outside audit, there's some kind of shit to pay to give you. I'm not gonna know it from somebody.
Well, I think that's right. And she aimed at the, uh.
Cause the man, I cut, I cut the CTA and robbery both in two percent to get a third billion dollars from neither one of them.
Kenny got CTA.
I like your point, I like what you said. Now, you know, there's a ton of money sent through robbery. It's a lot of money sent to CTA. And it's always our fault if we do anything different, they blame it on us, they get a cut right, but they don't cut there. I'm not trying to tell you, here is plenty, plenty. And they're all up. But I mean, I'm just saying, if you're not gonna follow and get the audit thing on time, so we can look at them. Then we all cut both in two percent. I'm pulling the board anyway. But it's just, it's not pulling it in.
Alright, we'll get you some audits from everybody, about, at, uh, each one of these organizations we can. Any other questions on non-departmental?
Did you adjust it? Did you adjust it in ways like we talked about, or did you put the same figures in?
We put what was suggested at the last, uh, workshop. We included those, those, uh, uh, additional, so I mean, this, the bottom line is the bottom line. And between now and October, I guess, you know, it's our, uh, we had to make these things. So there's a gap between, you know, a lot of things.
There's a lot, there's a lot of CTA we did. And we were able to discuss what we were saying on. On the CTA and robbery, we drafted it in. What they want, or what we want.
We did what was requested, and that's, you know, that's why we reviewed it last time, and we can revisit that, and you know, if you wanna, uh, suggest. And, and again, you know, we've got a ways to go before six o'clock, and we've got a lot of ground to cover. This is just non-departmental, so I mean, if you're, if you're telling us you want to, um, you know, adjust that.
No, I, I think that, I think everyone, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but I have a feeling that we're okay with most all of the line items in here except for the robbery. There's still a question to review their audit financial statements, which I understand that is electronic copy. And of the CTA, and I believe everyone received it in the CTA audit. Okay, alright, and I think that's still there, so I think that's still an open discussion at some point, and I don't think we put this to bed completely yet. Okay? Correct?
You said something about what you do with those, uh, museums. Did you put twenty-four thousand in for twenty-one or what?
There's twenty-four thousand, I think the adjustment was to utilities, right, power?
Correct, we added it to power and not the contract.
I think we had CVVG kind of, uh, opportunity there, right?
You to mount this part, the community development piece?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where twenty-four initial for Mardi Gras was at, wasn't there last year, right?
So you have twenty-four thousand for contracts?
No, we did not, we added it to electricity.
Where the rest of the?
Where George War and Seafood Museum get an electricity allowance, we gave an electricity allowance to the Mardi Gras museum as well.
That's not a problem, that's not a problem, that's not a damage. Yeah, that's not a problem, that doesn't do it to contract.
Oh, anyway.
I'm not gonna raise one of those contracts and not raise all three of them.
Okay, are you saying you strike it?
I said, I told you before.
Okay.
The legal contract was sixty thousand, that's what you should go back to. If you're gonna raise anything. That's the legal contract, we cut him twenty percent. And if it was sixty thousand, so to me, you should go back to sixty thousand for all three of them on the management contract.
Well, we not on, we didn't touch the management contract, left some management, and that we, they were asking for, you know, power and those kinds of, uh, I think, uh, utilities. And they were, what we put in, so we put it where, in the right spot.
So we're giving, we give them all an allowance, and we're doing the same thing for the Mardi Gras museum.
For power, yeah.
For power.
We didn't change.
We also give George War and the Seafood Museum an R and M allowance, and we do not do that for the Mardi Gras museum.
Okay.
And then we pick up certain pieces as well because we own the buildings. Like the fire panels, the elevators, inspections, pest control, we handle all that, and it's not in this piece.
Okay.
And that's all part of the building, the elevators and all that. So I can't quite understand what you're saying. All this stuff belongs to us, like the seafood museum, the whole thing, all of it. Now, oh, keep me on the grounds. So what they try to build on is part of the building. And they all go on this, so.
Correct, and we own all the libraries as well.
Library, you about this library?
We own all four libraries.
Yeah, well, that's, 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 we do. I'm gonna rent it, we do. They don't give us anything, that's what you gotta pay the bills.
Yeah, I'd like, uh, the, the chair, I didn't know we were gonna go over, uh, non-departmental. It was just an update. Um, I, I'd like to, for lack of a better word, keep this tabled and go over the next, uh, items or the next departments. And then George will give it full, you know, scrutiny, you know, when we get back to it and, and possibly have the, uh, other council members here as well. So today, my understanding is that we're gonna focus on, uh, police, fire.
Department.
And then if we can get through those two, uh, departments, we'll move on to another department, but those are the two I think we need, we need to focus on today and see how far we can get.
Exactly, and where I did also, we'll give you an update on the revenues, not really much, so from the last go-around. So you've got, you've got the latest and greatest from revenue standpoint, and then of course, non-departmental. Now. It's the right one, okay. So, that brings us to, you know, the summary. This is, you know, each line represents a departmental summary, and it has figures from what we're proposing in twenty-three. As it is right now revised in twenty-two. An increase or decrease? Decrease is in red this time, right? Okay. So, everybody has this, this tab or this, uh, paper that says summary of departmental expenditures. Okay? Now, uh, they've highlighted in, you know, bottom line kind of figures on, uh, where everything adds up. We also make note that, um, when we started this process a while back, you know, we were, uh, a number of additions, uh, to positions and so forth, but that, those, those rough most columns are really called employee accounts. You can see the increases or decreases by department. And of course, water and sewer, uh, and port is down there by itself, or separate. Alright. You know, bottom line, our departments and non-departments altogether, and to the general fund, looks like an increase of about two-point-two-eight million. And that's a summary of the categories from personnel, supplies, services, contractual, and capital outlay. You can look over at the capital outlay, it's still about six million dollars of, of things like trucks and, and equipment and, uh, pumps and mowers and so forth. Uh, again, we whittled it down, and, and there's been a continual process to see what is needed, when it's needed, and, uh, making sure that the value is there in the capital standpoint. But if you go over to the, uh, personnel, uh, columns, you can see a number of departments have decreased. And the big hitters were in, again, uh, crucial services in police and fire department. You know, we're trying to be competitive in all of these areas, but public works, police and fire. And, um, I think we looked at the possibility, at least in police, we've, uh, compared our patrolmen, uh, and making sure that we're competitive to the rest of this state, and especially this region. So that's why you'll see in total, an increase in personal side salaries and wages and benefits to one, one-point-seven million dollars. So far, so good, right? But bottom line, mostly the two-point-two total increase was, is in the personal services, and that's your, your personnel, your, uh, your employees. Again, capital is a significant thing, but you know, if you, if you look back, you know, where are we looking at as far as bottom line? From revenues to expenses, you know, there's a, there's a gap of about six million dollars, is that right, generally? Yeah. And it's just, this is a starting figure. But it's real, these are real numbers. We're conservative in revenues, and we're conservative in what we need to do in the expenses in the departmental, uh, operations. So I'll take a breath.
Have, uh, you can see any type of raises at all? What is that?
Well, you know, there, there are raises in, specifically in the, in the fire department, in the police department, excuse me. I mean, you know, we're talking about about six percent to patrol, is that about? And again, we've been trying to hire people, uh, but I think that's, you know, very significant, you know, uh, initiative to make sure that we're, you know, our patrolmen are, are, you know, right up there, and we're competitive, and people wanna work. I think, you know, I don't, I don't wanna put any words in your mouth, but you know. South, in the south district, yeah. And I, and I think, you know, uh, uh, Chief Miller, and the whole group has been, and everyone's been, you know, job fair and those kinds of things, and trying to explore and trying to present our case, come up with Biloxi. But it takes these benefits, and it takes this, this compensation to make us, uh, where we need to be, once again.
We have, there's not, there's not a job fair around here, we haven't been to, we've even had a couple of our own, uh, which were pretty successful. But young people coming in, that's what they're looking for, is the bottom line, what am I gonna make right now? That's what they're looking for. The only way we're going to attract them is to be right at, you know, the highest paid rate, or very close to it. Again, that's what they're looking for. People are, I mean, you know, the insurance for, for the rest of them is great, uh, and some of them do enjoy that. But young folks right out of school, how much they can make.
Chief, does this budget give you a staffing, uh, or funding source to fully staff and run your department to take care of the needs of the city of Biloxi?
So, uh, the budget does right now, and the mayor has assured me that, that if there's a, an instance where we need to hire more policemen, right now, we've got, today, we have thirty-one openings in, in sworn officers, thirty-one, we've never had that many before. We have thirty-one, and we're trying to fill those now, but if that thirty-one is filled, uh, the mayor has, has assured me that he'll come back to you, and, and, and if there's policemen to be hired, we're gonna hire them.
Right, and, and again, it's almost, you know, we need to look at this every day, by day, by day. The challenge is thirty, you know, thirty sworn office positions is unheard of. And the only reason, of course, it's not, you know, very easy to be a policeman, or a teacher, or, you know, a lot of things. But especially in, in, uh, you know, the, the work that you do and the risk that you take. There needs to be a reward, and I think this is probably the least we can do to go make sure we got good folks on the street protecting our, our, our visitors and our citizens too.
Right, I, I think with the salary increase, if somebody's looking for a job for, as a policeman, they're, they're gonna come to Biloxi. And that's, that's the best we can hope for, I think.
I'm all for that, I mean, we got some type of increase in the rest of the city. Six percent amount on the choose, you have to get some type of increase.
No, it is.
When you got people who talk to everybody, people working, I mean, you, you know, we gotta have six hundred something people working. Right now, we just losing too many people.
Well, you know.
It takes money, like this, it takes money. Need to put something on the table.
And you see, the increase for the last year is mostly, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's mostly personal services, personnel. We're investing in, in the salaries to keep people going. Well, you know, what we did too last year, we had about a five or six across the board too. So I mean, this is coupled with, you know, what we experienced, so I mean, in twenty-two, we, we passed some pretty good, uh, increases too, so. But it's, you gotta do what you gotta do, and I think this reflects that.
Forty-three percent cost to save for like, uh, employees. And then three percent cost.
Well, we can do the arithmetic, right, by, you know, by department, but I, I don't have that. The whole thing is, that, that, that move is a one-point-seven, probably was two million, two-six last year, I think, when we did that, didn't we? Two-point-six last year to do those five percent, six percent, bring everybody that was around got that. So, I mean, the bottom line is, is, uh, as you see it there, one-point-seven to personal services, that includes the benefits, that includes the, uh, you know, things we pay match up with as far as, like our, our Medicare and these other things.
Like Chief noticing, right now, they look for more money. Everything costs more money, they need more money. They like the benefits, they like the insurance, still gotta add that money.
Right.
There's groceries on there. Uh, we need to, we need to look at putting something on the table for our parts.
And, and similarly, and it's, and every department has the same thing, Chief just showed me a whole page. Uh, none of them had less than a hundred and eighty thousand miles on these vehicles, and, and, you know, and we all know about vehicles, right? They cost something, you know, forty, fifty, and another ten on top to, to equip it, like it needs to be equipped. So, it was a serious, no, you said, uh, it was about twenty of them, about twenty.
Yeah, there's about twenty, twenty-five cars on there that, that, and when you said, when you're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand miles on a police car, it's not like a hundred and eighty thousand miles on a regular car. You know, it's, that's, that's.
Brutal.
That's, uh, that's pretty close to end of life for a, for a patrol car.
I have to imagine, I have to buy the cost. That's the thing, I think it's important, I think it's trying to get across to you. Can't just not ignore the rest of the city in voice, like give some type of additional raise issue.
Any other questions for the chief? Yeah.
That's why I have only three percent increase where we cost.
Get to your minute.
I should turn that one off.
I, I don't know.
About one percent?
Well, you know, it's Diane was kinda, uh, speaking in Croatian to me, uh, just a second ago, but, uh, hit, uh, you know, you'll say, when you compare bottom lines to bottom lines, I mean, we, we can, I agree that's an important, it's an important thing. Our people, our personnel, our employees make us, you know, what we are, our success, and I don't mind putting it in, in there the right way, uh, and, you know, our difference between revenues and expenses without considering a lot of the things is still six million. So we add another eight hundred thousand, now we're seven million plus, if we added across the board three percent. What can we, what can we afford is, is the purpose of these, these exercises we're going through in the next few weeks? You know, I don't mind doing a special meeting next week too, but I just, this is the, you know, the, the first rollout of, of bottom line to bottom line. And, uh, you know, things that you, you know, talked about in the non-departmental. But literally, you know, if you had paid no, you know, non-departmental at all, it's still, you know, you're still gonna wind up with a four million dollar difference. But, uh, I'm, you know, I, I'm confident, you know, we made, uh, we, we built up some fund balance over the last couple of years, you know, and, and that's year-to-date gain or loss, that's, that's what they call equity, or what they call, uh, fund balance, right? So, and we suspect, yeah, our next step will kinda give you some projection of what we've, we'll see in cash as well as, uh, fund balance in October one. So, I think last year, in our combined statements, utilized one-point-seven million in the general fund to move it forward. But that's, you know, that's part of the balancing of the, of the budget, I think, it's.
True.
It gets almost like a revenue, revenue from past year will be used for this, you know, this, this next coming year. Chief, I can get a question.
After the chief, I have been, uh, waiting on the other chief to come up then.
Okay.
So we're moving along.
So nothing on, you're good?
Nothing on the fire, I mean, on the, uh, police chief.
Mr. Newman?
Chief's good.
Mr. Tuesday?
Yeah, several things in no particular order, so just looking at the handout you gave us, Mayor. The police department, we're looking at, um, increasing our budget by a little over half a million dollars, five-hundred-seventy-five thousand. For next year.
No, nine, eight, eight-fifty-seven. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. Is it an increase or decrease in personnel?
Do we have a different sheet?
I'm at the very, I'm at the very top.
It's not.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Alright, so, so overall, we.
Boston department, yes, I'm sorry.
We're gonna give, uh, the chief less than six hundred thousand dollars, and then we break it down in that next section where it's broken down to personnel, supplies, contractual services and so forth. Where, where the employee count is under fiscal year twenty-twenty-three proposed, we're looking at two-hundred-and-thirteen, is that total people in department chief, or is that just what's total? Civilians and sworn officers?
That's the whole department, that's everybody, dispatchers, front desk, policemen.
Okay, so right now, we have thirty-one vacancies, looking for thirty-one sworn officers.
Thirty-one in patrol, thirty-one.
Okay. Alright. And, and looking at the increase for the police department, that includes that six percent increase, so that, that accounts for the bulk of that eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. Okay? Uh, below what we got fire department, there's an increase of nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars there.
Right. Yeah, and that's reflective of safer grant too, as far as, uh, some funding coming for those additional lawyers.
Okay, so with the, I'm not, so how, how does all of that break down? I know with the safer, when we get safer grants, that, that.
Pays for the first year.
It pays for the first year, it may pay for more than the first year now, I think, is that correct?
Three years.
Three years, I'm sorry.
Chief?
Yes, uh, current, what we have applied for is a three-year grant to fund fifteen additional personnel. Uh, we have not been awarded it yet, uh, we are not guaranteed that. Uh, we, we put in for it months back, and, um, you know, the federal government's moving at the same rate that a lot of other stuff is, so we should be hearing something before, uh, October first, but I cannot guarantee that. So we have to, we have to kinda budget for it and hope for the best, uh, but it will be a fully funded salary, uh, for three years for those fifteen personnel.
Okay, so that's, that's what accounts for that nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, those are fifteen firefighters.
Yes, sir, I think so.
With the safer grant, we don't get the grant, we pull that out of the budget.
I, I hope not, but, you know.
You know, and, and that being the case, that also means there's no increase in, in personnel cost for the department, so there's.
That's a discussion that we, we've had with them during some of our little budget talks, that, you know, if we don't get the grant, is there a way to work towards those fifteen maybe over a, a couple of years, series of years to get that?
No, I, I got that, that increases the manpower, but I mean, what I'm also looking at is, and when we pull that out, there's no salary increase for firefighters.
Correct.
Okay.
Metrics is, you know, we, we got thirty-something pieces of equipment, we want a number that's magical, four people per piece of equipment. And the safer grants gets us there, cause when we reach, we're three-point-something right now, we get four, that, that hits a, a target that we wanna be in.
Right, I got that. Okay, I'm, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
If I could get the other chief up here. Chief Miller. Chief, I, I recall, I can't remember how many years ago it was, but we, we typically purchase, I don't know in a typical year how many vehicles we purchase, but I recall. Chief, I recall, I can't remember how many years ago it was, but we we typically purchase, I don't know in a typical year, how many vehicles we purchase, but I recall, could have been three years ago, four years ago, it might have been longer than that. We like, didn't get almost any vehicles. So, I I kind of feel like we're playing catch-up, we're trying to play catch-up, and I don't know if we are catching up or not.
Right, that's a good memory, sir, yeah, we are, we are playing catch-up. There was one year, we usually get between ten or twelve vehicles a year, uh, but there was one year that I I don't think we got any vehicles that year. And it kind of put us behind, that's really, that's really kind of why we're down on vehicles now.
So, how many vehicles are you looking at getting next year, roughly?
There's about ten or twelve.
Ten or twelve, okay. But we're really not making up any ground on what we lost several years ago and we didn't order, we're just kind of treading water.
We maintain, we're still going to be using some cars that are that are pretty close to the end of life, yes, sir.
All right, it would be great, um, if somebody could make it in administration, it'd be great to get away two or three cars there. Um, generators, I mean, I just know those generators don't last forever. I see schools that are replacing generators, he's, you know, right after Katrina, your generator's in good shape or?
They're they're, they are not, and they are in the budget to be replaced.
Okay, so they're budgeted and to replace. Okay, so when you talk about salary increase of six percent, those are just for sworn officers, not for the civilians or?
No, sir, that is just, that's just sworn officers.
Okay, and I was looking at some other information that I track, and how many vacancies do we have in dispatch right now?
Eighteen.
We have eighteen vacancies?
Yes, sir.
If we're fully staffed, how many dispatchers would we have?
Do you remember what the number is, is it, like, thirty, huh? Yes, it's thirty-two or thirty-three for fully staffed, but we have, we have a.
All right, but we're still, we're still looking for anybody out there.
We are, we have as much trouble, trouble hiring dispatchers as we do sworn officers.
I got you. Okay.
He just said we have two starting tomorrow, but we just, we just lost a couple the other day.
Okay. Uh, now, we're looking at under personnel, proposed in fiscal year twenty-three and revised for fiscal year twenty-two, that difference for next year, forty-six, roughly forty-six point three million. This year, it's forty-four, almost forty-four point five million, that difference about one point eight million. Would be accounted for by the increase with the safer firefighters and the police department pay raise, correct? That that.
No, no, uh, no, the the pay raise is in there, the safer grant is is figured in.
Right, that's that's what we said, the safer grant and the sworn officer increase, that accounts for that bulk right there.
Right. Because all the rest of them, you know, most of them went down as far as, uh.
Right.
Personnel.
How much are we anticipating or what's our revenue, let me phrase this correctly?
Rejecting?
When we budget, whatever we budgeted for revenue this year, we're going to exceed that, we're on on, uh, on a train to exceed that by, I'm assuming, roughly a couple of million dollars, right?
No, more than that.
Six point six.
Six point six.
So, the revenue.
Seventy-four million, seventy-four million.
You got this.
Okay, so so the revenue difference between what was budgeted and what we'll actually.
Record.
See is about six million?
Yeah.
All right, so that includes sales tax and gaming, all that stuff, right?
Includes an opera grant, too.
Okay, so we're pulling in six million. And I'm thinking we have salaries that were budgeted in different departments, but because some of those positions are vacant, that money's not been spent.
Yeah, but, you know, the reflection of of actual to actual to actual is, you know, is where the run, fund balance will be. But the difference in budget is what you're talking about, we had budgeted sixty-eight million, we're going to receive, we're projecting seventy-four point something.
Right, but that's just revenue, but I'm looking at, when you look at all the positions that have not been filled this year, or folks who who worked here part of the time, left and that position wasn't filled, we're looking at, what, almost two million dollars right there? Do you have a figure for that? I mean.
On on unfulfilled vacancies, would you ask?
Okay, that's what I'm looking at, just.
A little bit of that calculation, too, in public works, because some of the things that, you know, you couldn't fill some of the vacancies, we just heard some of that, we had to budget it for a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Move some of that, make contractual services or we.
I got that, so when we look at this unanticipated revenue, or unbudgeted revenue that we're going to realize, and then some of these vacancies that weren't filled, we're talking about, we got about seven million dollars going into next year that we didn't have a year ago, eight. So, and the reason I ask that question is I'm thinking for every percent increase in salary that we give folks, exclude the the sworn officers, we're talking about four hundred thousand bucks roughly, that be about right?
Think so. Three percent, yeah.
Hundred thousand?
Yeah, okay.
Is that, so about, is that, I'm thinking about four hundred thousand per percent, maybe? Do you have an estimate?
Plus benefits.
Three percent was eight, yeah, okay. Chief, kind of roughly, eight of three percent, the rest of the folks would be about another eight hundred thousand?
So, with the question you're asking, what would, for the rest of the folks that didn't realize, you know, primarily in the PD, probably another eight hundred thousand to to bump the remaining folks? When you say remaining folks, you're talking about?
Everybody.
Everybody, so not.
Except the ones that are already booked.
Right, so if you gave, gave the other employees other than those sworn officers we mentioned earlier, three percent increase would be about eight hundred thousand dollars?
We're guessing.
I think that'd be a good thing to do personally, I mean, apparently we have the money.
We can go through that that exercise, you know, the next go-around, we're anxious to keep rolling with this this workshop, because that's what we're doing.
Okay, but if somebody, administratively, if somebody would make that note, because I'd like to come back to that. That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Glenn, thank you.
Mr. Bowe, anything for police?
Uh, no, the only, the only thing I really have, most of my questions have been answers, I agree with Dr. Tisdale. Um, you know, if the money's there, I would like to see across the board us help out our employees again this year as much as possible.
Okay. Let me move back to, Mr. Gads, you want to talk to fire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief's good.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know, I know we've talked about the fire department with thirty-one sworn officers short, how many guys are you guys short?
Um, it it's hard to say, um, with the, with the current budget, the way it is, um, we have a certain amount set, but that's for minimum staffing. Um, if we were to get to that four per truck, uh, the fifteen would be getting close to, um, an an ideal number where we would have enough to where, as we let people off on vacation or sick or anything along those lines, we would able to at least staff the four people on a truck in the busier areas. So, we can identify, of course, our busier areas, so we would, of course, start with those those areas and and work our way out. So, I would say roughly about fifteen were short, safer grant.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
How about anybody else other than the firemen?
That they had worked on it, on the fire department, not actually a fireman.
Um, up in the admin office, it's it's pretty much, uh, we're fully staffed except for a front desk assistant. We we typically are staffing that right now with a, uh, a guy on light duty, somebody that's that's had a bad back. Or when we don't have that, we'll task it to one of our assistants, uh, and it kind of rotates amongst them.
You know, you talk about the safer grant, the whole thing we talked about before, that they pay salaries for three years, for thirteen, thirteen years.
Yes, sir, it's, uh, it, we applied, uh, so we identified that we needed fifteen by running some numbers, and so we applied for the fifteen that we would potentially need to get. Those better numbers on the truck, um, which would work towards a better class rating for the city, right now, we're a two. Um, that coupled with the infrastructure work that's going on, uh, those are two big components of that insurance rating. Uh, so we would be, I wouldn't say we'd be a one, but we'd be really close to getting those those necessary numbers to get there, um, which would impact our our insurance rating for commercial especially. Um, so when we ran those numbers and then we saw what the safer grant was, uh, was offering this time around, it is one hundred percent salary for three years, which has never been, normally, it tapers you off. Normally, you start, first year's one hundred percent, second year might be in the sixty-five or seventy-five percent range, and then it cuts you back to about thirty-five percent on the last, so. It's a significant amount, I think we worked it out to be about, uh, three million, close to three million over the three years, so about a million a year for those personnel.
Well, there's, there's a new hire, so are the people who work for you?
These would be new hires, yes, sir, these would be in addition to any, uh, any new hires that we would need to replace the, uh, the retirees that are coming up. Right now, we currently ran the numbers, and I want to say that our department is, about forty percent of our department is capable of retiring right now, they've hit, they've hit, uh, the twenty-five-year mark, whether it be with us totally or, uh, elsewhere. So, we're trying to to really get ahead of that through, uh, you know, recruitment, uh, similar to the chief. We don't have thirty-one open positions like the police department does, but we are, we are trying to aggressively recruit for that eventuality when these guys start, uh, retiring, because they were hired around the annexation time of, uh, War Market area, where we started expanding rapidly out that way.
Have this covered the newbies, uh, the, you know, brand new ones coming in, uh, laterals?
This will cover the the new, new personnel, laterals, uh, will come in at a different rate, and they will probably be the ones replacing retirees. And that's what we're trying to to, uh, just like the chief is trying to raise salaries, we would like to to see something similar, uh, you know, raise the salaries, that way we can entice other departments, because right now, our guys are getting dual certified. We require not only to be firefighter certified, but we also ask them to be EMT basic certified to keep their job, and that all has to happen in the first year. If they don't require that, we we release them and they can go, they can go elsewhere that doesn't have those requirements. But, uh, to better serve our citizens, we felt it necessary to to have the dual certification.
And you kind of hit, was headed into the direction I was headed about the salaries being comparable to a laboring cities, and what will it take to ensure that we keep firefighters?
Yes, sir, uh, we're we're right in line, um, you know, I know Moss Point just had on the, uh, on the news that they are the highest paid starting, they are, they are beating our salary right now by about a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. Um, you know, where we, where we come out ahead a little bit is our our benefits package, but, um, you know, the newer generation does not, does not recognize a lot of that, except for the salary, so we'd like to stay competitive. Um, Gulfport is right there in line with this, they offer some incentive pays for their their paramedics, their, uh, EMT advanced, their EMT basics. Um, so what we're trying to do is potentially entice those departments like Gulfport, Pascagoula, that that require the same dual certification, the EMT and the firefighter, to come over, that way we don't have to spend the time training them. All that we do is do a little orientation, they're right on the trucks, and they're they're out doing the job.
And that's something that I would like to see, you know, because, like I said, we are Biloxi, we are the, we we want to stay atop, so to speak, and be more than competitive, and that includes a fire chief, too. Um, because when it comes down to it, you know, you also, being a leader of our department, uh, should be comparable if not higher than ones around the coast.
That's all that you're, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Denny, a question on the, the safer grant, you feel like you're going to get that? What are you doing to be prepared for them, and you said brand-new people, you have to train them, or you got, or are they working, going, trained?
No, sir, currently, um, you know, how the the safer grant works, it is for a brand-new, um, nobody trained, anything like that. Previous times that we've been awarded the safer grant, um, they've done it different, where sometimes it covers salary and the training, the initial training, and maybe even their turnout gear. Um, this time around, it's it's almost purely salary, um, and then we supply the 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 gear, the uniforms, uh, the training, uh, which here lately, um, in probably the past three to five years, we've been doing all in-house training. So, it is our training staff that is doing it in coordination with the State Fire Academy, and we do our testing up there. So, it's a, it's a minimal cost, so we really don't hit, uh, too much of our budget with that aspect of it.
How long does it take you, so once you get, how long does it take you to put thirteen people back to work for you?
So, so we are awarded the safer grant, we hire the fifteen that we're awarded, uh, it will take us approximately twenty weeks, uh, because of the two requirements, the the firefighter basic with the hazmat aspects, we we do about a two or three-week hazmat training, uh, which is awareness and ops. Uh, once they've got to pass that to be eligible for the firefighting, then they do the basic firefighting, which is another eight weeks, and then we roll them right into a crash course on EMT basic, which is theoretically a semester's worth, uh, at MGCCC, and we pile it into about six to seven weeks. So, it's extensive, I mean, we we hit them, we hit them hard with a bunch of coursework.
Okay. We need to know, that's good.
All right. Mr. Dunne?
Thank you, um, and I apologize for being late, I'm sure, I may ask something that you may have covered earlier, I I understand there was no discussion about the fire department before I, um, came in and ran the police. But something you just mentioned a moment ago, you said, um, if we did these things, we would get close to a one, and we know that if we get to a one, it does affect our fire ratings, does getting close to a one affect our fire rating?
No, right now, we're sitting at a two, and I think we're one of the two cities in the state that that has that class-two rating.
Now, you said if we did the the fifteen, um, and and something else you suggested would get us close but not to a one.
It's it's debatable, they don't give us, uh, the the insurance bureau doesn't give us basically the entire score sheet. Um, so we've, we've reached out to them and inquired, what do we need to do to get our city to that class-one? Um, and they've given us kind of a a template that gives you where the points kind of are assigned. Personnel and water system are two major components to it, in addition to your prevention efforts, uh, you know, your community risk reduction, training, have a training facility, which, uh, we've got, uh, probably, I think we opened it about two and a half years ago. Uh, those are our work towards it. Um, it's hard to say, I I don't want to promise that it gets you to a one, um, because it it really is a subjective setup.
And I'm going to ask you to to guarantee that if we do A, then B will be the result, I just wanted to know what else we could do, what other things do we need to do? Is that something that's possible, and should we be looking to contribute to the fire department to get us to that one? What is the value of a one versus a two?
So, with our water system, like our, the guy that came down, um, and did our rating, uh, a year or two ago and got us to the two, he can actually tell us, if you speak to him, he can tell us certain mains that we need to upgrade from like, say, a ten-inch to a sixteen-inch. He can tell us where we have deficiencies, um, so yes, I think it's possible, especially with the infrastructure work.
Yeah.
Once it's completed, that will be a huge aspect of it, uh, once we can show that we've got everything to the proper mains. Um, and then the other part is the personnel, and that's why the safer grant is a huge deal, and that's why I'm concerned if we don't happen to get it, we still need to move towards that that four person, and it's a safety factor, uh, the way we fight fire and having backups and partners and that sort of thing.
Right, and you said you're aggressively recruiting, when you recruit, um, outside of being a newbie, a new hire, and a rookie or freshman, I don't know what term the fire department uses for the, for a one-year person, it's easier to get someone from the department, as you said, a lateral transfer, because it reduces the amount of training you have to do. What is the ideal amount of service in another vicinity or jurisdiction that you prefer?
Um, preferably three years, minimum three years.
So, where are we at on a three-year fireman with, um, regard to being competitive, so salary?
So, three-year fireman, uh, we're we're right in line with other departments, we're not really exceeding, um, we're competitive as far as that. When we were to bring, if we were to bring a lateral in, uh, we just made a change where instead of that lateral state coming from Gulfport or Pascagoula coming in with those certifications, instead of them helping to start at that bottom, we're starting them at a firefighter-two pay rate, which helps compensate for the the drop. So, essentially, they're going to be a driver engineer or firefighter-three for us over in that department. When we bring them over, they theoretically are taking a pay cut because everybody's kind of. them over, they theoretically are taking a pay cut because everybody's kind of in line with our pay scale. Everybody, back in the early 2000s, we were the top. You went up to the state and they called us big money Biloxi. Um, since then, I think several of the northern cities, your, uh, Ala Branch and some of those, uh, that are around the Memphis area have had to compete with Memphis. Um, so we are not, you know, we're probably in the top 10, maybe, but, um, we're not that, that big money Biloxi. So, um, what we have to compete with is not just our neighboring cities, but I know Gulfport's losing people to Slidell, and we lose people to Mobile, because they're, they're way more competitive, uh, as far as got higher salaries.
When you say way more competitive, can you give me an example?
They, they probably start a firefighter off at about a 42,000 to 44,000, um, with incentives, uh, if they have EMT basic, that sort of thing. Um, I think Slidell has about a, uh, has about a similar pay rate, but they have a 20-year retirement. So it's a, uh, it's a, it's a huge, um, deal when you're looking at 30 years versus 20. And I know that's state level, but that's another, that's another issue that's hurting our, um, both of our recruitment efforts is that 30-year retirement at the state system.
If there's one thing, and I'm not promising anything, but if there's one thing that we could do, um, to help you recruit those three-year firemen, what would it be?
Uh, I mean, of course, you know, like I was speaking earlier, uh,
You were just mentioning?
Salary is always a, uh, an enticement, especially for this younger generation. You can talk to them. Um, and I'm not saying it's, it's good or bad, but they are more, um, uh, money focused. Uh, you know, it doesn't come into play as far as insurance or benefits package, doesn't register as much, um, as it did 20 years ago.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale. Uh, Mr. Eubank, sanity check. Question. Thank you, Mr. Geiser. A question, Peter. Um, this, this deals with incentives, hiring incentives, and I'm wondering, is, is there a legal way, is there a lawful manner in which we can offer incentives to first responders, um, so that it's not a reoccurring expense?
Basically do what Gulfport is doing now?
Oh, I, I have no idea what Gulfport is doing, other than trying to catch up. Still love you Gulfport. Um, I, I don't know, but is there a way to do that? I, I'm just thinking maybe, going back to what Mr. Dunne said, it may be that, uh, with this incentive, Peter, we just might be able to get folks over. I think if they come to work for us, I think they'll stay working for us.
It, it may have to be something by, uh, by the salary schedule we do. Uh, that may have to be, uh, looked at, other travel expenses were, could be added. We were looking at that for another position. There's an AG opinion that says you can't just add that on to it.
Right.
But as far as a, uh, like a signing bonus, that's, that's something we could explore.
For, for a firefighter to be a leader?
Kidding. Just for any, any new firefighter or policeman.
You didn't get that.
So, um, would, would you accept that challenge to see what's out there and how we might approach that? Uh, it'd just be great if it was a, a, a non-reoccurring expense, some sort of incentive to get them over here in the door.
Sure.
Possible. Thank you.
I will.
Mr. Barrett, anything for fire?
Uh, I'm good for now.
All right. I wanted, uh, can I, I want to ask Chief another question. On, on dispatch, where do, where do we pay the real income people come and work for? Just where do they have to raise it per hour, dispatchers and people like?
Right. After last year, after the raise, they got, in the past, a 1666 an hour.
Six percent.
I think that's right. Yeah. Just went to 1666 an hour, and that's, that has already shown, uh, to be successful. We've hired several people, and we've moved up. They were making like 13 bucks. So 1666 is
Sounds like the coming in pay.
That's the coming in the door pay. Yes, sir.
That's pretty fair. They're all, but, well, so there's a whole ton of dispatchers. That's a tough job. I just
We do. And the dispatch pay is, it's, it's about average with everybody else around us. There's a couple a little higher, and there's a couple that are a little lower.
Yeah.
I have a question for you.
I don't know what you have, but that's pretty much it. I don't know if it works for you lower than that, right?
Oh, yeah. There's, uh, we have, uh, uh, I'll have to look and see what the desk clerks are making and records are making, but I don't think they're, I don't think they're to 16.
I don't know. I don't look at
About most 15 bucks an hour for, for records and intel.
That's, that's probably, I'll have to look at that too, if I, if I, if I, if I'm paying, or that's, that's how it pays, 15 dollars. Do anything, you do it all the time, so, you know, get paid for that.
Well, I would always want more money for them, you know, so
Yeah, always want more.
I always want to get more money. I mean,
Yeah. I was just wondering. I mean, if people get hired other places higher than 15 dollars, like the secretaries and that.
Let me ask Chief, uh, I know every morning, every Monday morning, we talk about calls for service, and, you know, a, as far as dispatch, i- is that 1,800 calls for service or, or like probably 50% of the calls you really get? I mean, literally, the action that takes place in dispatch, I mean, you know, pretty much, you know, 15 to 16, 17, 18 hundred is what you report on. So that means somebody went to a place to, you know, pretty much every week.
Yeah.
But you probably get 3,000 calls that you have to do.
I don't, I don't want to lie and tell you those numbers, but it, it would be higher. The dispatch is non-stop. I mean, that's a non-stop.
I mean, the action is there for sure.
Constantly.
Yeah. I can use the good watch out. They're bigger than a lot. No, they don't, don't tell us, you, this time.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's a, it's a very, very demanding job.
Well, you can, you know, I can sure we're in line to keep the people, because then they had dispatchers. And you have to have all, all of theirs up to sworn officers, you know? They have to have a complete unit.
Right.
So that's the end of the game.
All right. We're going to try to wrap up fire real quick. I think Mr. Dunne has a question, and Tisdale is next.
Uh, and I may have missed this too. Either way, um, I walked in on suggesting a 6% raise for sworn officers, and I'm assuming that's to help us be more competitive in the marketplace to bring in officers. Um, with what we just talked about with the fire department and the following behind with the one years that are, our dollar value may be comparable, but we're not as competitive as we want to be. Are we, have we explored a raise for the firefighters to make that department more, more competitive? I mean, a base raise to the, to the, to the men and women that go out there and put themselves in danger every day?
Well, over the last year, we, you know, we looked at from five, seven, five on, on up, especially in, in, in fire department. We hadn't done it this year, but it's easy to do. We've run those calculations. If, you know, where do you need to be in order to, you know, our goal is to get that one, which translates to, you know, to benefit to everybody who has to pay insurance.
Right.
As well as just the safety of, of, you know, your, fire department always beats any kind of AMR every, to, to the place. So, no, we'll, we can recalculate that our next go-around. We can, uh, I don't know whether it's, you know, a 2% or 3% would, would help on, on
Right. I, I think earlier it was discussed for a 3% for everyone. Um, so could you give me what the cost would be to make for, for, for our, um, officers at the fire department? What it would cost to add 3% to, to that small select few as well?
Yep. We'll do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Tisdale?
That's it. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. All right. That wraps up, uh, fire. Why don't we, uh, go ahead and knock out legislative? I think y'all have the legislative budget before me. Kerry just worked on this a little bit too. Kerry, you want to hit some of the highlights or not? Or you want us to discuss it? Yeah, go ahead. Take the, let's talk about it.
Well, I'll, I'll start if you don't mind. If, if you'll take a moment and find, there's a handout that Kerry put together, and, and the only thing I'm thinking that we would add to that that's not on there is perhaps an additional 3,000 to 5,000 dollars. I think it may be for travel or conferences. I know that, uh, most of us go to the summer conference, and I know summer conference down here, and some of us, not always the same ones, uh, go to the winter conference as well. And, um, so I would just make that suggestion that we increase that 5,000, just to be on the safe side.
Can y'all make a note of that on the legislative? We want to increase it by 5,000. It's currently at 5,000. We'll increase it by 5,000.
Okay. Services are charged. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on legislative budget? It's pretty, pretty self-explanatory right here. It's not, not a big amount. George?
I got to ask another question. Do you have all the microphones? Who has all this equipment?
Is, is this part of the council budget, or is this part of the administration's budget?
We asked for 15,000 dollars. I think someone had mentioned it, but we've been, uh, engaged black line. Black, uh, line is, is one that's examined and given us a proposal to integrate all these pieces of equipment. He'll be here tonight, uh, Scott Henson, who does this, you know, for a lot of folks. And, uh, we spent some time, our, our, you know, Kiki and, and Shane spent some time together, looking at the bits and pieces of the fires that are old. We're going to come up with a, a plan. He's here to participate on, you know, the, the balancing and some of the equipment that, uh, do. But we'll, we're going to be entertaining what needs to be done.
All right. We've talked about this for quite a while, but we're going to actually actively address the poor sound quality in the screen.
And
This year?
Yeah. Both, you know, for the, the internet world and
Oh, yeah. We sound horrible on YouTube. We sound horrible on YouTube.
And, and again, the equipment has been bits and pieces and so forth, and I think, uh, uh, that'll be part of our solution.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, George. Didn't mean to intervene. I didn't mean to intervene, but I apologize for doing it rudely.
That's okay. Fine. I, I know. My question, the people that are watching on TV, and sometimes it just goes completely quiet.
You look at that little box, you look at that little box right there, right next to you. You see that little black box that, that's pumping all of this? So there's some, we may re-channel some of those things that tie into the, uh, the, the audio feed as well as the, the other feed. So there's, we'll, you have a complete, uh, replacement of what, what needs to be done.
All right. Mr. Tisdale? Yeah. So with the sound system, when can we expect something?
He'll be there tonight at, at
Something in place. All right.
All right.
Good ball, ask George.
Anything else? Just, just trying to follow up. People ask the question about that watching on TV, said it sometimes comes in and out. You can't understand, or like somebody sitting there, it's like totally quiet, you know, anything. Yeah. So I was just, well, I understand. I know what you're saying. I'm talking about people watching on TV for a reason. Everybody loves that, but they want to know why. It just goes in and out, whether it's me or the next council or somebody sitting there.
You look at that little black, black box right now.
I don't know what you're saying.
That's what we're going to try and fix, George. That's what I'm saying. The guys are going to be here tonight and listen to, you know, the audio feed and the, the whole nine yards. We're in, in the middle of that process right now.
Okay. Well, then, that guy, don't have to tell. Hey, hey, you don't get excited. Relax a little bit. Oh, George, just relax a little bit. I'm neutral on nothing.
All right. We're going to run out of time, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Garrett, you have anything on legislative budget?
I think one's going to be upset. He's been working
I'm not upset.
Mr. Garrett? Okay. Mr. Dunne? You have anything, Mr. Dunne? Mr. Barrett? Uh, legislative budget looks good with the one note there. All right. Uh, we have approximately 20 minutes. You want to tackle another department mayor? 20 minutes?
Yeah. Um, what department you want to tackle? The numbers are the numbers. Uh, is that? Yeah, Paul, Jerry, you're up.
All right. 20-minute George. Come on. 20-minute George.
I'm Jerry.
20-minute George. Which one are we doing? Uh, you're going to take more than 20 minutes.
What we got?
Let's talk about your budget.
Yeah. I'm happy with it.
All right. Why, why are you happy? Hit some highlights. All right. Don't overstay it, boys. Let's hear from you.
I, I got, this, the, the last two years, I've pretty much got the things that I've needed to maintain and provide, um, new park equipment for the parks and, and give them an uplift. So my only problem right now, Jamie, and you can, um, voice your opinion, is, is keeping employees.
Yeah, that's a general theme, you know, uh, I mean, across the coast, not just for, for the city, but we're, we're trying to tackle that the best we can. But as this budget stands, we've worked on it, obviously, you're, you're comfortable with it? Is there anything that's glaring that's going to be a, a, a huge challenge in this coming fiscal year for you?
No, we just have some more updates to make to Hiller Park, Pops Ferry, um, complex and the A.J. Holloway complex. But the mayor's, mayor is aware of that, and he's working with us.
All right. That's a good general question. I asked you, but we, we'll start with George. The 60 numbers that the whole year, 60 employees you have here listed.
Uh-huh.
So is that what you always have? Do you have more?
Yeah, I've had, I've had that many for the last few years, and it works as long as I have that many working at, at, at this time.
Well, I want to tell us about that, uh, complex. Do you have any volunteers?
Yes. Now, I'm only, out there at the complex, I'm short two maintenance workers.
Yeah. So how many teams do I have here in the rest of the year?
Um, the rest of the year, one, two, three, four, five.
Five?
Yep. Through the end of, um, the first week in November. And then we're just going to give the fields a rest.
And is it only a softball or both of them?
It's both. They use both sides of softball and Little League.
Do you have, uh, both the 60, do you have both players at home? I can't picture?
No, sir. The, the oldest age group is 13, 14.
And I got pickleball players all over the place?
Uh?
Pickleball players. I said, we're doing a lot of the, the, I was trying to say, I've never been to Pops Ferry.
Pickleball is pickleball. They're going. Uh, the numbers are, are outgoing. I'm a Snyder Center now.
That's a good, for the hot thing.
About the other day, and they had like 53 people signed up. And it's all ages. It's not just seniors anymore. It's, it's adults.
You feel like we're all a court?
Yes.
I mean, that was kind of a bad question.
Yes.
Yeah, because I feel like that. I think it's a good destination if people come into play. I think that people like it.
Well, you know, we have, we have the one out at Eagle Point Park, and then Ms. Beverly's looking at putting the one, you know, right there at the Todd Megas, um, T-ball field. I've been working with them on that one.
Yeah. I think they're going to act all right. It's a, it's a hot thing. Good thing for sure.
I think the mayor's allocated 200,000.
Yeah. I want to see all of them together, being 12 courts at the same time.
About 35,000 for a good court.
Yeah. And what is a court? You said 20, 35,000. What is that? Is that?
It's the concrete with the, the, the rebar and all that includes the painting and, and, um, the post.
Okay. I know you have a bunch of playground equipment coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Is it still on retirement? Like in August?
Working on it now. Meeting with the playground rep tomorrow. He's coming in. So we're meeting at O'Reilly end of August. It's going to be in, and we're going to start the installation.
And we're trying to put water fine, that we're trying, we're going to pull a couple Denny Foxes.
Asked, um, one of my workers to go ahead and get me that price, uh, today. So he's going to have it for me.
I don't know. They could do, the clerk, uh, got you the swing set? What is it?
That is a two-base swing set. One's going to, I call it a grandparent swing, where an adult and a child can swing, a toddler swing, and then two just regular swings.
Okay.
They never replaced the playground, Mr. George, after, um, Hurricane Katrina. It was a playground originally there, and it was never replaced. So we just decided to come back with a swing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Yeah. You said, um, of course, you've been having a problem keeping workers. Uh, what do you think would be helpful to try to keep them or hold them?
Money. I've, well, I've asked them all, all the time. Is it, is it the job? Is it your supervisor? It's, it's the money. They don't care about the insurance. They, you know. I did a little survey with other parks and recreation departments, and 13, 15 survey with other Parks and Recreation Departments and 1350 was their lowest and 14 was like the average.
They don't want the insurance?
Fifteen was a high.
They want to cut out the insurance?
They, they, they're young. They just, they want, they going after the money because, you know, the economy's high right now. I mean, that's what everyone has told me. I've had four leave in the last two months.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's, that's fair. Is there something you can put together for us before we pass the budget to at least gift a lawyer to see if we can hold on? Because, you know, like I said, I've been working with the Recreation Department on and off and seeing different faces all the time. And, you know, once you get somebody learning and trained up, then you got to start our back. And that's not good for anybody.
Well, I had been talking to Jill and the mayor and I told them, right now they're starting out at 1250. If after six months, you can give them an incentive up to, you know, 13 dollars and then after a year, you know, 1350.
Why?
Just give them some type of incentive to stay.
Yeah.
You know, I would think they would have said it was the job in the heat and the, doing what they're doing, but it's not. None of them have ever said it's a job.
Yeah. And if we can get creative that way, if we can get creative, a way to, to go ahead and, and hold them. Didn't you not have the, the beautification team at one time? Or, or how was that? Because?
We had three, three beautifica, beautification teams. We, we, at one point, we had 18 employees. Now I'm down to 14.
Okay.
So, and three, three of the crews were beautification. And we strictly went around and, and did plants at the facilities and flowers at different locations, annuals. So, but I think we have 10 employees right now from the job fair. That was great for us that we're calling. We just got all the backgrounds back. So we're going to call them and say, okay, this is what we have, this is what the job entails. Do you want it before we interview you?
Yeah, because it's very important that we have the front door of our city.
Absolutely.
Looking, looking good.
And we're, and, well, I'll tell you, we're behind in grass cutting. We all, not only do we do grass cutting, we also set up the civic center for all the bookings there, that's tables, chairs, and we also do logistics for events on weekends.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Miller?
Mr. Denny? Mr. Tisdale?
Several things, we touched on beautification. And I know this, a year ago, we were talking about just the trash that accumulates. We're a tourist area, people throw things out the window, the wind blows it, it's, it's always an issue and it's, it's really bad now. As well as, as the mayor, and I talked with the mayor about maybe contractual services with somebody to go ahead and get these rights away and everything. We just, we just don't have the people to do the work. But after that observation, also, we talked about fitness equipment. Is that in this, for Pinz Oil Park is, that's in this next budget? And I had mentioned a couple of times already, a water fountain as well, if you'd make a note of that.
Enough money and therefore water fountain, but, you know, the water line would have to come out of park.
Think of it this way, think of it as a splash pad, without the splash pad, you just run a water line out there and put a, you know. Next thing is, along the lines that Mr. Geyser had mentioned earlier, I know lifeguards has been a constant struggle and I hear about it because at Snyder, if the natatorium is short a guard or two, they pull them from Snyder and usually that's at the last minute. And some of those folks are, oh, part-time and maybe we can do something to bump up those salaries as well, maybe a part of that three percent across the board.
Jamie, you can kind of.
No, it's, it's just an observation. I know everybody's looking.
It's not, it's, it's a national thing, it's not money. Keys were couldn't even open their pools and they were offering 16 dollars an hour this summer, correct?
They were still, they were still short staff the whole summer.
Okay.
Starting off at like 15, 16.
Got it.
Just the trend that we're seeing with lifeguards in general.
Okay.
A lot of certification.
Thank you. Jane, I'm just calling you, Mr. Gatlin. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
But remember, once the seasonal are gone this year, we're going to be very shorthanded lifeguards.
All right, so that, that's going to continue to be a challenge. I'm also thinking about maintenance. I know with Snyder, how does that facility now, it's 20, 25?
It was 2001, so it's 21.
So it's, so I would imagine there's probably some maintenance work due. Were they replacing the air conditioning in or didn't we just replace one or?
The chiller got replaced.
Okay.
The chiller got replaced. And then we're having some issues with it, but what we, we put that in our budget to pay for people to come out there and repair it. Jamie, we sent Star out there to do an inspection to see exactly what needs to be done. We want to know exactly what needs to be done to that because it's been going out too often.
So, so contract, and I would assume that would be taken care of under contractual services if public works can't do anything to help you. Do you have enough money in contractual services or anything for unanticipated issues? You know, machines are always out to get you.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about contractual. I question, I kind of question that one.
Maybe something you want to look at, just.
Because we, we got a report on Gruewich, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to that air condition. We got a civic center is kind of a little problem too right now. But we haven't gotten that report back yet also.
Okay. I know that you have vehicles as well. How are you fixed for vehicles? Are you okay? Are some of those have to be, I don't know how many?
No.
Hundreds of thousands.
Worst could probably catch up from Katrina because when, at Katrina, was my understanding, they put all that money into one lump sum and everybody kind of took it and Parks and Recreation kind of got what was left. So we're probably still short maybe four vehicles. And I put in for two. But we're making it work. I don't have to keep.
I know how the budget works. You'll make it work, whatever they give you, whatever we give you, whatever. The last thing is, I just make an observation because somebody, I think it's been mentioned a couple of times here, the job fair, might be like doing a job fair every six months.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who coordinated that, but sure, whoever would, whoever coordinated that, I, I would hope that, you know, after years' experience, no, it's, but seriously, it's just, if somebody could do just a little better job coordinating that, get the folks there, I think we might pick up some folks. Thank you, that concludes our comment.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Eubank, anything? He's out of the room.
Okay.
I have one more, one more quick input.
Mr. Geyser?
But the, I noticed within, because of COVID and things, we didn't do the summer camps. Did we bring the budget to bring them back?
No, we did summer camp.
Oh, summer camp.
Yeah, we, we're only doing three sites.
Summer camp, I'm sorry.
Summer camp.
Summer camp. I have a special case in that.
I know. I do too, but, you know, we can look at it, we'll, we'll look at it. It's, I'm not going to say we can't bring it back. It's just going to cost more to use the school system and, you know, a few fewer employees. So, yeah, we can look at it. That's one reason I didn't bring it back because, you know, they drool and, and because of COVID. So let's just see how it goes next year with COVID and if it's still out there, okay?
Thank you, Director. The chair entertaining motion is adjourned. All right, moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Wild. So any discussion on further? Meeting is adjourned. We'll take a brief recess and we'll begin the regular meeting at 6:00.